Okay, it is November 6, 2019. We're at a Board of Education regular meeting. This is the opening ceremony. It is 7:00 PM. Call to order, please, Mr. Mucciolo.
Mrs. Etter.
Here.
Mr. Naaman.
Here.
Mr. Sutraci.
Here.
Mr. Dobbins.
Here.
Mrs. Schukert.
Here. Five present, zero absent. On behalf of the Board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. The Board values and encourages public comment on education issues. Anyone having an interest in the actions of the Board may participate during the public comment section of the meeting. Please identify yourself on the Board sign-in sheet, which is over on the orange countertop. A copy of the Board meeting agenda is available for review on our school district's website. Please silence your cell phones during the meeting. At this time, can we stand for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry about that.
You better work on that a little bit.
Yeah.
Shakey there.
At this time, I will take -- I will take a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Some move.
Move by Mr. Naaman.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dobbins. Any discussion?
I pulled the state testing data off the agenda just due to the length of the meeting tonight with the five-year forecast, and I don't want to -- we don't want to be here till midnight, but I also want to give that data the appropriate time, and maybe at a work session after the first of the year, we can just dedicate like an hour to just looking at that and really across some different areas. So I'll push that back a little bit.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Naaman.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye.
Mrs. Etter.
Aye.
Mr. Sutraci.
Aye.
Mrs. Schukert.
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. The next thing I have is executive session. I hereby move that the Board adjourn to executive session pursuant to ORC Section 121.22D2 for the purpose of an audit conference conducted by the Auditor of the State with officials of the public office that is subject of the audit. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sutraci. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Mucciolo, roll call, please.
Mrs. Schukert.
Aye.
Mr. Sutraci.
Aye.
Mrs. Etter.
Aye.
Mr. Naaman.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
It is 7:02, and we are in executive session with no board action taken. Okay, it is 7:40, and we are reconvening from executive session. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Etter.
Here.
Mr. Naaman.
Here.
Mr. Sutraci.
Here.
Mr. Dobbins.
Here.
Mrs. Schukert.
Here. Five present, zero absent. I don't hear my computer up, so next thing I think is public comment?
Yes.
All right, so I have Mrs. Seitz signed in for public comments.
Hey, good evening, welcome. Sorry, I just want to share with you, like, we are student council doing a new student breakfast, so, next week. So if you have the time, I have a little invitation for you to come to my room. Mr. Pacey and I will be cooking with the students, so we have about forty middle school on Wednesday and about forty high school on Thursday. So please come in, enjoy.
Forty cooking in your room?
Well, I'm cooking for them.
Oh, I thought you meant they're cooking.
I have to be crying, be hanging from the ramp.
Exactly, but you're smiling when you say that.
I'm sorry. I know, thank you.
I need to get my request with the Boston Sour Crock outside.
How long do you see it starting, like, seven?
I came to the school this morning, so I told the students they have an orientation, they sound like the students are last this year.
Okay.
And five on fifteen is in their first year, so they're in that.
Okay, first year starts at 7:15.
Seven thirty-five.
Seven forty, so.
Yeah, seven forty.
So it's seven to seven forty-five, you're thinking?
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, I'm still not on this thing. So moving on to...
Presentation.
Any other comments? I think you guys signed it, but you put no, I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
It's your big chance.
Did not.
It has a mic. It's like open-mic night at the board meeting.
Presentation on GPD.
Jason's all yours.
All right, good evening, everybody. I see you did some perks of being a board member.
Easy with the word perk.
So I'm joined today with John Kavec. He's our lead sculptor in the year with GPD Group. We wanted to come back to you and present one particular item that came out of our facilities assessment that we did. So, you know, as part of that facilities assessment, we went sort of up and down with each of the buildings and came up with a list of 175 items. And we said if there was anything catastrophic, we would make a phone call right away, and there was nothing that we saw along those lines. But of all the items, there was one particular item that we thought should be elevated and take a little bit more quicker attention versus all the other items that can be planned a little bit longer. And it relates to a crack that is known, because it's been monitored for a while now on the south gym wall. So we just, we presented it to the administration. They felt it would be prudent that we go through with you as well and kind of share with you what we found, sort of, you know, what the next steps are and kind of what we see that going forward. So that's how I just went sort of through the agenda there and then the Q and A. So that's the location of the wall there, and I'll pass it on to John here. Okay, so as you guys know, that wall, I think, I don't know if you guys have all seen it, but we have some pictures here that we can share with you. It is on the west side of the gymnasium, up on the stage, on that mezzanine level. It's a very long horizontal crack that the wall has shifted, translated a little bit. Like Jason said, we just wanted to bring it to your attention, so you have some additional information, so you guys can deal with that, with what we see. This is, gives you some sort of context of how the buildings were assembled and what timeframe, and it leads to one of the reasons why we think the wall is done when it's done. And you can see right here, the version 1939 building, some 1957 additions, sixty-ones and whatnot. This is, this area right here that's kind of highlighted by a thick white box is the wall that is in question right now. And you can see it adjoins the 1957 edition there. Moving forward, I got some, I'm going to show you the, some pictures here, and the first picture is we're standing outside looking at the wall, just so you can see what's happening there. Then the second set of pictures is pretty, we're actually seeing the wall itself on the inside, so you can see what's going on there. So this is photographs, I label one, two, three. I'm going to flip back real quick, not to distort it to you, but there's, one is looking southeast down the wall, okay, so you can kind of see what's happening there, there's a little bow in it. Three is just an overview of that wall, so you can see what's going on. I'm going to talk about a control joint there and how to show you where the additions about each other. And two is someone leaning over the side, taking a picture straight down, so you can see that there's some movement there, too. We'll come back to the pictures four, five, and six a little later. But you can see here, this photo looks looking right down the wall. And you can see that by the mortar joints coming across here, and you can see how toward passing electrical conduit, it starts the bow a little bit. It's kind of hard to see here, if you were in person, you can see a little bit better, but you can kind of see what's going on there. Number three is the overall picture, so you're seeing the bow from, actually, between the... So this is where the 1957 building is, our 1961 parapet that is built in front of us in 1957. And then what they did is they put a control joint there to allow some movement to happen there. And then along this wall right here is where you're seeing the bow.
Can I ask, is that control joint that white line?
Yeah.
It is.
Okay. Such as Tom?
Not control joint here, but that control joint we think was detailed improperly. It didn't allow for enough movement, and this is kind of where I'm heading with this. And then photo number two is, if you look at photo three, actually, is looking down the length of the wall. That's what you see there, you can see that the wall has shifted outward over there. So move back to going inside the building, we're moving over to the mezzanine plane here with pictures four, five, and six. Four is just an overview, and then five and six are just detailed, enlarged pictures of the cracks and shifting that we saw. So if you go, if you go to the gym there, behind the stage, go up the ship's ladder to the top, that's where you're going to see these pictures out here. So it's not evident from ground level per se, you know, on the state level, but get up there.
There's some mechanicals on that mezzanine? Or is it on the other mezzanine? I know there's mechanicals on the other mezzanine, is there mechanicals on that?
There's ductwork entering the wall coming through. And something down that, so, going on, this is the overview of the wall, something that doesn't really show it, we wanted to condense it out, waste so much of your time here. But there's another picture here that that line continues on, and that's where you see the mechanical ductwork coming through, and there's a huge, like, break in the mezzanine. Also, like, there's an add force there, because the face shells are falling off or anything like that. So that's the, photo four is the overall, and then you can see photos five and six, one is the out-of-plane movement of the wall. The masonry's actually shifted out to the outside, but you can see in another picture how it built out, this is kind of a result of that. And then also the lateral translation of it, there's a big gap between the mortar and the hedge joints, so the masonry has stepped down. Now, the whole reason why we did this in the current is because of that control joint. When clay masonry, when clay brick is first made, it's put in a kiln, and it's, when it comes out of that kiln, it's as small as it's ever going to be. If they completely dry it anymore, that's not any moisture. So what that does is kind of makes it like sponge, okay? It likes moisture, it absorbs any moisture it can. And so throughout the life of the building, with rain and any kind of moisture, it is slowly expanding. That's why we like to put control joints in buildings to allow for that natural expansion. Well, here, at this, at this joint, it was a hard joint, even though it had some, a little bit of give, this wasn't big enough and didn't allow for enough movement in the wall around. So what happened was, the anti-compression number that's overstressed, it starts to, if you put too much pressure on it, it wants to bow and buckle. And that's what you can see in that one, one picture, it kind of bowed out, you can see that the out-of-plane movement, you know, it kind of shifted, and eventually it gets too great for the bond between mortar and the masonry, and it shears off. And that's why we did that large crack the way it is. And then the business, you know, the moisture just continues and continues to break. So that's where we are right now. We have a wall that has shifted and has moved, has relieved the stress in the wall from the built-up compression that it was feeling with, because it couldn't move before, and that will make these kind of results. Just to add, though, this is, this is not a load-bearing wall, meaning it's not carrying any joists or beams or something like that, that's supporting a larger roof or something along those lines. Still has, obviously, impacts, you know, structural impact, but it's not from an overall structure. Yeah, so I was going to hit that, so, no, it's okay, it's okay. So yeah, the wall's not load-bearing, but it is an exterior wall, okay? And the exterior wall, one of the things that it needs to do is not let moisture in, right? Keep the temperature of the occupants inside okay and everything else like that. It also can act as a shear wall, which I might get too much into, if you don't believe that this is, so I'm not going to even kind of go with that. But for the most part, it is a envelope wall, and right now, that envelope, if you look on the outside, doesn't look like it's cracked. Doesn't look like, even though you have these internal cracks, just the way that the wall was built, it just hasn't translated to the outside yet, which is a good thing, okay? Because now we still have watertightness, I shouldn't say tightness, but we have not as much moisture infiltration as one could have had if you would have bigger cracks going through there. So the big thing here is that, you know, you do have an issue. And so since it isn't a load-bearing wall, it's, I shouldn't say it's not critical, but it's not, it's not critical, I don't want to say it like that, but it's not, it's not going to, you know, it's not that important of a wall, okay? But that doesn't mean that it shouldn't be brought up to code, okay? So right now, when we did our analysis, we wanted to see, like, how, how, how much can this wall take, and how far away is it from code right now? And right now, we're about eighty percent of code, okay? So it can take about eighty percent of the design loads that we would see. So what does that mean to you guys? It means it's, you know, in the range of seventy, seventy-five mile per hour wind, okay? So as you can see, in this area, the probability of getting that kind of windstorm is kind of low, it can happen, but it still is low. But the thing here is that we, the design code load is ninety miles an hour, so we don't need that. So that's why we're coming to you, because we believe that in the near future, we should reinforce this wall, just to bring it up to code, right? Right now, I don't think it's a life safety issue, but it should, it should be, you know, it is an important...
I have a question, actually. So do you know if there's any internal decay in the wall? So like, if, I know that the outside is basically, you said it's stable, and that there's, you could see the bow, but there's not a crack on the outside, but the inside there is, and you said that that's due to basic pressure and water? So is there, is there internal damage in the wall behind that or inside of the wall?
So we did not see any. You know, eventually, our solution, it really, the solution we're going to present, really doesn't matter if there's internal damage. But if we were going to try to leave it and do something that we were not suggesting, then that would matter, and I think that's the reason, which I'm going to get to a little bit later, of why we're suggesting to do what we want to do. But right now, the brick outside is good, it's bonded through hedge joints, like, if you look behind you, you can see that there's a, there's a long brick and a short brick, long brick, short brick. Those long bricks actually go through and sit on the concrete masonry.
Okay.
And it bonds it together. We haven't seen any information that says that that's debonded.
Okay.
So, but again, our site is limited there.
Sure.
It's only along the openings that we can see, but even along those openings, it just, it looks like this was a pure shear up, you know, it's a shear up.
Okay, yeah.
And the good thing that gives it stability is that that mezzanine is bearing on that wall. So from the mezzanine up, it's not bearing, but from the mezzanine down, it is bearing, so it's tied in, so that's what's giving it a lot more stability.
Okay.
If it wasn't tied in, we'd have a different conversation.
Got it.
So is your recommendation a repair, a fix, or a replace?
It isn't, okay, so let's, let's move on to the next photo. So our, our solution is to repair it, okay, not to replace. And it's a simple technique that a lot of homes in this area have done in the past, and what it is, is you just put some vertical steel channels at an interval that we'll determine based on stress, and bolt it to the wall. And what that does, it gives it structural stability, and then that wall really just becomes, I wouldn't say it's a veneer at that point. And the channels are doing all the work, the brick and the masonry just transmit that force to the channel. So that, that is what we're saying. I think this is the most expeditious way of doing it. I think it's, to be honest with you, I think it's one of the least costly to do it, so I think... Thank you. And I think it's maybe the quickest way of doing it. It's, you know, a lot of these channels that we would size for are common steel shapes that are in any steel yard, there's this way that you purchase. So a local contractor can get them, do what he needs to do to it, install it fairly quickly.
So would you only put those vertical things in that area?
Yes.
Like, okay.
From the mezzanine, we'd anchor it to the mezzanine floor.
Okay.
And we're anchored to the joists up above, so it can't move up top, can't move down below, and we're going to anchor it to the wall, so the wall pushes and pulls on that network.
And it would be visible? It wouldn't be hidden?
That is correct. But it's not the best aesthetically pleasing solution, but it's a job done.
But no one sees it. Yeah, but nobody sees it, so it doesn't matter.
Nobody's going to see it anyhow, it's, and that's, that's restricted access mezzanine, and one of the reasons, we were going to take a field trip, but I'm not going to have everybody climb a ladder to see the, to see the crack in the wall.
Like gym class.
Because at first I thought, I thought it was on the back wall, it's not, it's up on the mezzanine wall, so it's really, it, they found it as a result of the inspection event, but...
Can I ask another question? So are there any, now I'm learning all this lingo, you know, construction lingo, are there any soft costs associated with that? Or is this kind of like the bottom line that you think the range would be?
So what, we threw a number up there, this is our, for the construction costs. There would be some, a fee associated for us as well, to, you know, put together the documents and manage the bidding and construction, but, and that's not included in this, but it's very difficult to estimate these smaller jobs because they vary so widely, just depending on contractor availability. You know, we can say what it really should be, but those things are, you know, they're very difficult sometimes to get the contractor to be available when you want him to kind of do this, so that's where, that's why I give a very large range with that. In the end, it could include probably everything, if that twenty thousand million, it might include everything, this thing may come in, you know, on, at the fifteen million, and it would probably cover all of our costs, but it's, if it falls on the higher end, then it may, it may be some self-help that would be done with that.
If this is a thing you would have to do, you have to set out a bid, and then contractors would bid for the job, and then you'd make a determination?
Yeah.
That's what I was going to ask, so does, how does that work, now that we employ you guys? Like, do we make the decision as a board which bid we go with? Or is it you guys as the architects that we've hired?
I'm not sure what the stipulation is with the administration, but we would give you our, our recommendation.
Okay.
Put the ultimate, the decision to either, I don't know, the threshold between administration and board, but the school would make the ultimate determination in the contract.
With our options, and would there be options? Like, you go out to bid for three or four contractors, and, you know, two of, so you could be number six or eight contractors, and three of them meet the specs and you accept them, then we see all three, or would you say, no, there's three, but we're going to recommend this one?
Well, yeah, we would probably only give you the ones that meet the specs.
Okay, specs, you'd give, it could be more than...
Unless we want to see all of them, we could, you know. So this is probably a smaller threshold where we don't need to publicly advertise the work.
Right.
We can solicit bids from contractors, and we can give you some recommend, or we would, you know, provide some recommendations, and if you had some of those, we could, you know, start with that, and then see if we get enough interest, if we get, you know, we just want to have probably three to, to make sure that they're all kind of looking at it the same way.
I understand why, why they're here tonight, first and foremost, the, the work needs to be done. We believe the work needs to be done, should be done now. We, we have the funds to do it, and it's of a scale that we have the funds to, to take care of it. The second part of that is, this is almost a little bit of a, a step-by-step, kind of a test run, for lack of a better term, as to how this process will work when we start down the process, to see how, so the Board has an understanding of GPD's interactions with us, and the process, and, and the fact that they've got the connections with the contractors out there, so this is, it serves a purpose on that level, too, prior to us looking at a big capital improvement project. This, again, for lack of a better term, it's a, it's kind of a test run, with work that we know that needs to be done, and, and has been set up there for a while, and we have the funds to, to repair it at this point in time.
Yeah. I think we should do it.
Any other questions? I'm at?
What are we, the next steps, then?
The next steps is, we're going to meet with Donovan, we're going to, we're going to go through the process of, we're looking at repairing.
Yeah, we have authorization, we'll submit a P proposal, and then if we get authorization...
So you're going to bring a resolution, then, to the next, to a future board meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I didn't know what the timing was for presenting it to the Board, okay? All right.
I mean, we're not in, like, in emergency, emergency status at this point, so we can hold on to the next board meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And then what's the, what's the estimate of that, the length of that holding up that way? Because actually, would be, so we still have a stress that's, that's actually, I mean, supported by the beams that we're putting up, so that, that should relieve the stress from that, that joint, right? And so that, that would...
No. So what we would do is we would saw cut a joint where that control joint was, we would make it wire, we would put the proper materials in there to make it watertight and allow it to move the way we want it to move. And then this is providing stability for the wall back and forth. So right now, it's kind of shifted off its, you know, base, and we want to kind of not let it shift more, so that's what is...
That's, those are where the braces come in, then, too. Okay, I got it, and then...
Does the crack get filled?
Yes, I was just going to ask, too, it's like...
Well, that's, that's the expansion joint is, for like, an expansion joint is a crack. It's a crack that they construct for it to allow that movement, movement of the wall, so.
Depends, if, does it need it? Structurally, it would be completely safe with this solution. If you don't like those same, then you can fill it in, but smart balls. And I don't know how much extra cost you really want to put into the system in an area that no one really sees.
Yeah.
That's up to you guys. I mean, we can, we can make the documents and such, where they can put a little scratch code on it, it's good enough, but it's not, you know, over, over the life of the time, that scratch code can come off.
Well, I guess you, you had indicated that the exterior is not a problem, because I'm thinking about any kind of water damage coming through.
Well, if the exterior is a problem, we'd have a much bigger problem. It was, if, if the outside had been compromised, there'd be water that would have worked in, and, and the water would be working from the outside in, in that freezing thawing. If, if the outside wall was compromised, that wall would quickly, we'd get a lot of damage in it very, very quickly, because once the, once it's compromised, that water, the freezing and thawing in the winter, especially in our winters, acts very rapidly on, on some kind of compromise of that nature.
So what would be the, if, when the braces go on, what would be the, the amount of, like, wind force that that would uphold? And to, as you said, that we're underneath what, like, I guess what code is, right?
Nineties code, we're about seventy to seventy-five right now. We could, we could make it exactly ninety, but it's always going to have a little bit more capacity.
Sure.
This is the nature of steel, you're going to get, the way they put it, there's minimums, but you always get better than minimums. So we'd be above that, so we would make sure that we are code compliant, no problem.
Beautiful. And the outside bow will remain?
It will remain.
Okay. That's what I was assuming, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, without short...
No, I'm not, I'm not complaining, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Yeah.
I can't wait to look for it on Saturday. Want to see if I can see it with the naked eye? Do you see him?
It's good. Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. Okay, Mr. Mucciolo, moving on to the next presentation.
That, that presentation will be on the shared file, so if you want to go back and look at it, through the Google, through the shared file.
Thank you.
Again, I just want to thank GPD for coming out.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. We looked at our forecast, we have the notes, the November forecast, and we have our single forecast spreadsheet, so everybody should have their copies.
There's a single one, oh, here?
Yep, yep.
Okay, thank you.
So the notes is really where all the information's at. We just look at the forecast real quick, but the forecast is showing us, and we have copies on the table, too, but the, it's showing us actual fiscal seventeen, fiscal eighteen, and fiscal nineteen, and then we're forecasting fiscal twenty, fiscal twenty-one, fiscal And then we're forecasting fiscal twenty, fiscal twenty-one, fiscal twenty-two, fiscal twenty-three, and fiscal year twenty-four. We can see where we ended two thousand nineteen. If we look at our cash balance line seven point zero two zero, we ended fiscal nineteen with thirteen million, eight hundred seventy thousand, six hundred thirty-four dollars. There are encumbrances, which are payments, open purchase orders that are still owed money on, seventy-nine thousand, which brings us to our unreserved balance all the way at the bottom, line fifteen point zero one zero, thirteen million, seven hundred ninety-one thousand, nineteen dollars. If we look at the far right bottom, we can see the ending number in fiscal year two thousand fourteen is a negative one hundred forty-three thousand. Fiscal twenty-four, excuse me, fiscal twenty-four is a negative one hundred forty-three thousand. So we are on the slope where we're crossing that break-even point of deficit spending that we have ahead of us. It's not uncommon to school districts, but our expenses are projected to outpace our revenues, so we're deficit spending year by year and we're eating away at our fund balance that we have in the general fund. This is only the general fund that we're looking at. This forecast is extremely conservative. I'm very conservative, so I'm gonna touch base on some of the conservative estimates that we have in here. And again, this is just an estimate at this time. These figures that we have estimated in the column doesn't represent that we're gonna spend everything that's there. We have some, you know, estimates there, so I'm gonna use the snow melt that we have for when winter comes. So we're estimating a certain amount that we're gonna buy for salt to melt the snow on the sidewalks. If we have a mild winter, we're not gonna have to expend and use all the salt and buy all that. So we have some padding in some of these figures for instances like that. And even if we have, you know, other estimates in some of these figures, we still base a lot of our analysis of these expenses off of needs and wants. So we're prioritizing, addressing all of our needs first, and then with the wants, we reasonably prioritize those as we go forward. So just because we have figures in the forecast does not mean, you know, if we have a seven-thousand-dollar figure, you know, in one of the line items, doesn't necessarily mean we have to spend every dollar of that seven thousand because we're looking at it from analysis of needs and wants. And our requisition process streamlines that electronically, so if somebody's looking for an item that we have, it goes through our requisition process and it's analyzed by many different levels that we have. So it goes through the proper workflow channels. Ultimately, it goes to the superintendent and the treasurer at the end. So that's really the analysis of a lot of the costs that we have for the needs, and then we look at it, you know, on a wants basis, reasonably prioritize from there. Any questions on just the forecast before jumping into the notes that we have?
Okay.
So if we look at the notes, I'm gonna go fairly quickly through these. If I'm going too quick, please stop me and I'll talk more on this. But I wanna go through each page quick. Page one is just the introduction. I wanna highlight one change on the first page that we have here. In the very first paragraph, we look at the sentence where it says, "The initial five-year forecast." So that says, "The initial five-year forecast must be submitted by October thirty-first of each year. This date will change to November thirtieth, beginning two thousand nineteen, because of Senate Bill two sixteen, which took effect on November second, two thousand eighteen." So this used to be the October five-year forecast, but because of that law change, it's now the November five-year forecast, and it's gonna be the November forecast going forward. So that's why we see that change. Page two is our title page. Page three is the nature of the forecast. Page four is the budgetary process. Pages five through eight deal with the different line items of the forecast, so if you wanna get a better understanding of the forecast, look there. Page nine is the embedded five-year forecast in these notes, just in case the other one gets lost for some reason. Page ten, I wanted to highlight a couple columns on that page. If we look at the top half of page ten, in the blue text, real property is divided into two classes. Class one, which is residential and agriculture, and then class two, which is commercial, industrial, and all others mineral. So if we look at the bottom half of the page, we can see that there are two tables that we have. If we look at the first table, look at the very first column on the left-hand side, tax year. We see each one of the tax years below. We don't have tax year two thousand nineteen information from the county yet. We'll get that as we, you know, move to December and January. There are a couple stars behind some of those numbers. Those stars indicate whether it's a triennial or reappraisal year. The county does that every three years. If we look in the third column, that represents the fiscal years that are impacted by the tax years. So if we look at tax year two thousand eighteen, it impacts fiscal year nineteen, half of it, and fiscal year twenty, half of it. Again, that's because of timing. Tax years are on a calendar year. School districts' fiscal years start seven one to six thirty. So that's why half is on, so seven one to twelve thirty-one is one portion of a fiscal year, and then the second portion is January first through June thirtieth. So that's how fiscal year works for a school district, so it takes half of the calendar years that are out there. The last column in that table is gonna be the collection percentage of levy per Cuyahoga County. This is very important. This is the main driver for class one and class two taxes that come to the district and that we assess, you know, what that amount's gonna be. Each movement of a percentage point is approximately two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars. Think of it that way. Two thousand eighteen had a ninety-six percent collection percentage, ninety-five percent, ninety-seven percent, ninety-six. Then it goes to eighty-nine, eighty-nine, and ninety-one. So we've seen high eighties and we've seen mid to upper nineties as well.
That looks like a break. We'd make a change. You weren't here, of course. I was, but I don't remember what change happened that time.
A lot of the big changes occur with the triennial and reappraisal, I would say, maybe for collection percentage. So evaluations do go up dramatically. That could affect collection percentages on tax levies. It could be the overall health of the economy for the country.
The overriding thought is that it's the, the economy's better, so the collections are better.
Yeah.
Just maybe oversimplified a little bit.
It's just such a big jump between those two.
It is.
And it's not trending upward below that.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, it dropped slightly from twelve.
Yeah. And you look at the spread between basically fourteen and eighteen, and you're looking at, you know, like, seven percentage, you know, points, and you're looking, you know, if you put a quarter of a million dollars at each point, that's a lot. That's one point seven million.
Yeah, right. That's what I'm thinking. Big number.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Wow.
Page eleven has a listing of levies that are out there. Page twelve deals with some more background for class one and class two, property taxes. We flip to page thirteen, more background as well. The bottom portion of page thirteen talks about tax and collection year information, so that's going forward. So we see tax year now two thousand nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, and the fiscal years in which it impacts. Highlighted in blue is gonna be fiscal twenty, which is our current fiscal year, and then we see with the star by tax year two thousand twenty-one, that's the triennial update that'll happen with Cuyahoga County. If we go to page fourteen, this is a good page with a lot of good information. The top half of the page has all of the levies that are current for the district, so we can see the year in which those levies were approved. The very first one that we have on there is our inside ten mills. So ten mills are provided in school districts. We get a portion of ten mills. Our portion for Cuyahoga Heights, we look at the tax rate column, is four point one. Below that, we see all the voted levies that are out there, everything prior to nineteen seventy-six. Then we have nineteen eighty-one, eighty-eight, ninety-one, ninety-seven, oh three, and the most recent levy that went on the ballot was two thousand twelve. And that most recent levy was seven point nine mills that we have. When we add all of our tax rate amounts up, those are the mills when the levies go out. Thirty-five point seven is Cuyahoga Heights' tax rate. Tax year seventeen and eighteen in the blue highlighted columns represents the effective rate. So because of House Bill nine twenty, school districts do not collect funds at, you know, the full amount of what that levy was adding. It gets adjusted by the effective millage rate to then bring what that levy would've brought in, so.
And only collect the amount that was applicable when the levy was passed. So as property values increase, to keep that number the same, the actual amount that we collect is less.
Yes.
The only way then you can get more money is if you get newly development, new development.
And right, no.
Right.
Because that works on the inside millage.
Right. The inside millage does not move, so that always stays the same at four point one for us. So if the valuation does increase for Cuyahoga Heights' school district, we benefit off of that valuation multiplied by the inside millage rate. So that's a small portion of where we can see increased funds, what we get. If we look at the bottom half of that page, there are two tax years, tax year eighteen and then tax year seventeen. If we look at tax year eighteen, this is the actual tax levy amounts that we collected as the district. So we can see for class one and two, blue, for the year, eight point seven million. But again, part of that is fiscal twenty, part of that is fiscal nineteen. This table right here is also in the small box on the long sheet that I provide, the tax long sheet, and I'll talk about that at our next board meeting, too. So it's the bottom right-hand corner of that sheet. Public utility, personal property, we collected two point six, and then the homestead and credits in green that we received, four hundred and forty-four thousand. All that added up brings us to eleven point eight million dollars that we have. Total estimated tax revenue at a hundred percent collection was twelve point two. This brings us to our ninety-six point seven collection percentage that we see from that year. And that traces back to that other page that we just saw with the different collection percentages that we have. I traced these figures here in the boxes with different colors, and it's gonna correspond to a couple other pages that we see. So it's gonna be easy to reference those figures and how they fit in. If we flip the page to page fifteen, this is all two thousand eighteen tax year information for what we have. So the very top has, again, all of our levies, the tax rate, the effective rates for that year. Column A, B, and C are the amounts of money that we receive off of that levy for tax year two thousand eighteen. And then we can see to the right, when it's all added up, and then we have the box, again, around the twelve point two million dollars that we have, and to the right of that, we have the estimated tax revenue at the ninety-six point seven percent that we have, the box around that. The middle table that we see is gonna be the valuation multiplied out to bring us to our revenue collections. Again, that's the twelve point two million that we're seeing. And then at the very bottom, we see tax year two thousand eighteen, Cuyahoga County tax rates. Now, this is new, and I think this is a pretty neat little table that's added in. So we can see with the green box highlighted around our school district, Cuyahoga Heights, that figure is the total of all of our tax rates that add up together, and we're at, what, thirty-five point seven. We're the lowest in Cuyahoga County. So if we compare us to other school districts that are out there, look at Cleveland Heights, University Heights. They're at a hundred and fifty-four. I don't think we're ever gonna get to a hundred, more or less.
Geez. So you're telling, you're saying, based on this, our school district collects the lowest tax.
Has the lowest tax rate in Cuyahoga County?
Lowest tax rate in Cuyahoga County.
You see, Independence is one above us, and then even the gap between us and Independence, and then Brooklyn would be the next lowest at fifty-eight point seven, which is, you know, almost twenty.
Which reminds me, didn't Independence have a?
Bond issue.
Bond issue, did it pass?
Not operating. No, it did not.
No. By a lot, it did not. Like, it wasn't.
Over a thousand.
Six.
Wow.
It turned into a ping-pong ball by the mayor's, the gentleman running for mayor, so he fell victim to the political process.
Now, the, just so that, because you'll hear the other side, people will say, yeah, we have the lowest tax rate, but our houses are worth more than the ones across the street in Parma or wherever, and therefore we end up paying more in taxes, so. Just, that's what you'll hear when you tell people, oh, we have the lowest tax rate. That's the contrary argument to that.
That's not, not.
I'm not saying it's right or wrong. I'm just telling you.
And that's, that's discussion, and I've had that discussion because if you go back to the mid nineteen sixties, the little, that little bungalow, I grew up on Sixth Street and the bungalow down on North Street in, in, in Parma were virtually the same price at that time.
Right.
The Parma schools were strong, Parma city services were strong. Since that time, there's been some decline in the city of Parma and the quality of the schools and the city services in those home values. Now that my mom's little bungalow is worth five times that same bungalow less than a mile down the street in Parma, so.
Right.
Not even close to what Lindy's is worth.
You what? Close to what'd you say?
But anyhow, just, just to, when you have these discussions, as we have, and we will have these discussions on occasion with members of the community, some people will bring up that point, so.
And, you know, the same, my aunt's house in Garfield, Garfield Heights, which was a three-bedroom, after my aunt passed away, this is eight, nine years ago, we weren't able to get twenty-five thousand for it.
Yeah.
And that's, it's just, that's what the market is and that's, that's what's happened.
Right, and then they'll tell you that.
Our home values have.
And their taxes are about three times higher, but the reality is, the house is worth about a third, so their taxes are about the same, so.
Right, in the end.
You see, you start playing all those games and people will play, whatever story you want me to tell, or Matt, or anyone, whatever story you wanna hear, we can use numbers to tell you the story, right?
Yep, correct. Look at Euclid schools as an example. So here in tax year two thousand eighteen, Euclid School District is at ninety-eight point eight-two. So we think a lot of times that these always increase with levies. Let's flip over to the next page, page sixteen. So this is all tax year two thousand seventeen information on page sixteen. Euclid School District is one oh nine point eight-two, so they went down. They didn't go up. That's because they had a levy that was not renewed.
They failed to renew a levy.
So they lost that millage, that tax rate amount. So they're putting, you know, they're gonna have to put another levy on just to get back to where they were.
They did last night and got beat last night, so.
That's sad.
Tough times at Euclid.
So these numbers don't automatically always increase. There's a possibility that they could decrease for that reason.
And you're saying that this tax rate also has been consistent since two thousand and twelve?
Yes, our thirty-five point seven. It went up by the seven point nine that we had added to that. And if we have another levy, we would add that to the thirty-five point seven for the general fund that we have, and it would increase it.
By the way, is it either us or Independence have been the lowest tax rate in the county for the last almost twenty years?
By a lot.
Only twenty.
Wow.
And we, you know, because back in twelve and thirteen, I think we were both passing levies about the same time. We were a year apart from each other.
Right, so we may have changed places once in a while, but generally, we've been the lowest.
We flip to the next page, page seventeen. Top half of the page, those are all the line items that make up the total figure row that we see, and that row goes into the five-year forecast. So if we look, we can see all those amounts that make it up. The total column, we can see, you know, fiscal eighteen actual, fiscal nineteen actual, and all the estimates for fiscal twenty through twenty-four. That's line one point zero one zero, general property taxes. So if we, you know, take the figures and we'll take, you know, fiscal nineteen actual, nine million, eighty-two thousand, five hundred fifty-three dollars. If we go to fiscal two thousand nineteen, line one point zero one zero, general property taxes, nine million, eighty-two thousand, five hundred fifty-three dollars. So that's how this traces out. So everything's broken out. We can see the estimate for class one and class two, eight point six million dollars for fiscal twenty, and then it kinda tears down from there. Again, it was a little higher in fiscal nineteen and eighteen. A lot of that plays with the collection percentage. Remember, split years that we were looking at? Even though we've been trending in the mid to upper nineties, we don't know what that collection percentage rate that we're gonna have, so this is a conservative estimate that we're inputting here. Again, there is a very, you know, good likelihood that that's gonna increase with a higher collection percentage increase, but again, there may not be. So this is trying to put, you know, a reasonable number in there to give us our estimate for the five-year forecast.
And there's a lot of information here, and as I flip through this, I missed the impact of that because I did have a question. Why are you estimating the tax income next year will go down, and it's because all those settlements are done?
Yes, correct.
Primarily.
Correct. If we look at line two, line two is for delinquent property taxes that we collect from the county. It has been high in fiscal eighteen and nineteen actuals, but again, that's collecting on delinquent property taxes. You know, I wanted to put an amount in there that's reasonable and not too high because we don't wanna kinda overspend it over, you know.
You collected a ninety-seven percent, there's less delinquent taxes to collect.
Sure, right.
When you're collecting an eighty-nine percent, there's a greater amount to collect, so it's just the potential for collecting.
And as we, right, and plus that, as we straighten out all of these suits or whatever, you know, these readjustments here, and we get those settlements paid off, then there are fewer people to go after because we've gone after and taken care of the ones that were a problem, so, yeah, makes sense.
And then the settlements, yes, we don't have any except for line seven, which was the CRA with NIDEC, which was just recently board-approved, a couple, maybe more than a couple months ago. Time goes by very fast. And we see the estimated amounts in forecast for here. If we keep going, page eighteen is gonna start the next line item on the forecast, which is line one point zero two zero, tangible personal property tax. Page eighteen has the background on it. I just wanna highlight two paragraphs. The second paragraph on page eighteen talks about what this is. So it's, "Public utilities subject to taxation on their tangible personal property include electric, rural electric, natural gas, pipeline, waterworks, water transportation, heating and telegraph." So railroads, think of it that way, utilities. The very last paragraph on that page talks about public utility, personal property. I'm gonna use an acronym, PUP, P U P P. So the ones that contribute to our school district are American Transmission, the railways, Cleveland Electric Loom, East Ohio Gas, that provide funds to us. Going to page nineteen, I wanna highlight the middle chart. This is the same exact chart that we looked at before, but we're looking at the pink, which is PUP, the Public Utility Personal Property. So looking at that middle chart, look at the figures in that pink PUP column. See how it's grown from thirty-three million to thirty-six million, thirty-nine million, forty-six million, fifty-eight million, sixty-seven million, seventy-three million. That's gone up. That's doubled in the past seven years. So that amount's been climbing every year. A lot of that's due to investments by those utility companies and railroads in themselves, and the county assesses that valuation and ups it. If we go to page twenty, the top chart, just wanna point out, there is If we go to page twenty, the top chart, just want to point out, there is no effective millage rate adjustment for this line item. It's collected at the full tax rate.
Yeah, I know that.
So, that's why tax year seventeen, tax year eighteen, highlighted in those columns, stays for what our tax rate is. So, it's a benefit to us, with the higher valuation, we collect more, so that's, you know, a positive for us. That's how the driver works for this line item on the forecast. The actual collection information is the same chart as it was for class one and two, but I have highlighted the total column for the PUP, Public Utility Personal Property, in orange and purple. And take a look at the next page, page twenty-one. Now, remember, we collected ninety-six point seven percent, you know, for tax year eighteen, but when we, you know, calculated out at a hundred percent, we're looking at two point six million for PUP. PUP isn't going to move with a collection percentage on it, because we collect virtually a hundred percent from those utility and railroad companies. There's a small amount of them, and they pay up on it, so it's pretty much a, you know, money in the bank almost, that we're not going to see a dip in collection percentage off of the PUP that we have here.
So, when you applied that, or created that percentage, collection percentage, did you take them out and only measure the other part?
Yep.
Okay.
Adjusted the allocation for class one and class two in the blue.
Okay.
So, we can see the ninety-seven percent, the ninety-five percent, ninety-two. The PUP remains the same at a hundred percent, where the others adjust accordingly to the drop, ninety-seven, ninety-five, ninety-two percent. Page twenty-two has two thousand and seventeen tax year information as a comparison. Page twenty-three has the line item that goes into the forecast. So, again, you know, what we're using as our estimate is, has that valuation that, you know, went from thirty-three million to seventy-three million, have we hit the very top, you know? And from looking at this, this is a conservative estimate, again, it's saying that, yeah, we've reached the top, and that, you know, it's, you know, not going to go any higher, potentially could even go a little bit lower with the next, you know, updates from Cuyahoga County. But again, that's conservative. It could continue to increase, which is a benefit to the school district here for us. Page twenty-four, this starts the next line on the forecast, line one point zero three five. This is state aid that we get from the state of Ohio. This is all the background that we have. I just want to highlight the last paragraph on page twenty-four. State foundation funding for fiscal twenty and twenty-one is flat to fiscal nineteen. There has been no increase. Page twenty-five is more background, and at the bottom of page twenty-five starts the explanation of state support that we receive. So, number one's the opportunity grant, and there's the definition behind that. Number two is targeted assistance. We flip the page to page twenty-six, we have number three, number four, number five, number six, seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven. Well, the new line item is line item twelve for fiscal twenty. And what that says is, foundation formula, new for fiscal twenty and twenty-one, lines one through eleven are now consolidated into a single line payment called foundation formula. So, the difference is, before, we used to have the funds broken out according to those different numbers, one through eleven. Now, what the state, the governor has deemed in the final budget, is everything's going to be rolled up into one line item, which is now foundation formula. So, all that's rolled up into just number twelve now.
Hmm.
And they did it in October, so they didn't do it at the start of the fiscal year, they did it, you know, into the fiscal year. So, we've already been accounting for it through those, you know, one through eleven on our financials. So, now, we essentially have to back it out and loop it all to line twelve. It would have been easier if they just said, hey, from the get-go, we're starting line twelve, instead of doing a couple of months, you know, one through eleven, so. But that's the state, and that's...
So, is the amount going to change any, or is it just the same amount, it's just in one place instead of...
Right, the amount's flat, so it's the same as it was.
There's going to be a change in that.
Yeah, there was no decrease, no...
That's my assumption, but...
The wellness funds that Governor Line has committed to, that was, he was very vocal about saying that that was his, his educational funding for, for the budget. And that's for this year, next year, those funds, we've seen the projections for our numbers for this year, next year, we don't know what that is. In fact, we should, we should have gotten our first payment in October.
Yeah, and that's actually number thirteen, the student wellness and success funding, so that's new for fiscal twenty and twenty-one. And highlighted in yellow is, this is booked into fund four sixty-seven and not the general fund. And we just, a couple of board meetings ago, board, you know, accepted that, you know, that funds been created by the state, so we're going to book those funds into that one. If we continue, page twenty-seven has a comparison of the last four fiscal years, so fiscal seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and into twenty. So, we can see the difference in state aid. We're pretty consistent, you know, about six hundred thousand, give or take, in that area. Seventeen is the casino tax revenue. We continue, page twenty-eight, has everything rolled up, so that's line item one point zero, one point zero three five of the five-year forecast, and we're taking the numbers that are here, and they just go into that line for the five-year forecast. That's how it's created. You know, the line's estimated to be pretty consistent, even a little dip, just in case we lose some resident student population, and we would lose that funding, so. Not necessarily anticipating a big increase from the state at this point, just seeing how it's been, you know, kind of trending. But if the state decides that they want to provide more funds to public school districts unrestricted, this is where we would book it, in this line. And, you know, if the state wants to double our, you know, per pupil amount that we're receiving, you know, just double that amount, so.
Sure.
Well, here's, here's the reality, that, that's what the proposal from the Alliance has been, and it doubles us, because what the Alliance for Quality Schools has asked is that no public school receives less than what the parochial schools receive per student support. So, parochial schools are getting a little over twelve hundred dollars per student, we're getting about six, a little over six hundred dollars per student. If they brought us to twelve hundred, it would literally double our state, our state foundation payment, so, you know, we laugh at that, but we would take that in a New York minute.
Oh, yeah.
Continuing on, page twenty-nine starts the restricted aid. The largest item is going to be in the middle of page twenty-nine, number three, catastrophic aid reimbursement. We go past page thirty and thirty-one. You know, this chart's the same as it was for the May forecast, putting a box around what we're looking to receive in fiscal twenty, about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. If we flip to page thirty-two, these are all the items that are rolled up to give us our total, which we put in the forecast. I did take a conservative estimate and decreased fiscal twenty and twenty-one by twenty thousand just to be conservative, because that's the nature of how I look at the forecast. But again, we're, you know, hoping that, you know, for catastrophic cost reimbursement, that that's going to stay consistent in the vicinity of about a hundred and thirty thousand, so. If it is, we'll readjust this forecast come May. Continuing on, page thirty-three, this is our property tax allocation line of the five-year forecast, line one point zero five zero. And I have highlighted on page thirty-three, homestead exemption in green, non-business credit in green, and owner-occupied credit in green, because we look at those long tax sheets, and we have our blue, pink, and green, and this is now the green area that we're jumping into. This is also the reimbursement for the phase-out of TPP, which is on the next page that we'll talk about. So, if we flip to page thirty-four, this talks about the phase-out information for tangible personal property. The top is, you know, the figures that we get from ODE as a projection, and it's going down two hundred and thirteen thousand per year. The middle is the entire amount, when it would last come to the district, assuming that the decrease that we have remains consistent, and by two thousand and thirty-one, that balance will be zero. And the bottom is new, so I put in an explanation for the calculation of the phase-out. So, to explain the calculation for the phase-out reimbursement, it is one sixteenth of one percent of the three-year average total taxable valuation of the district for tax years two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, and two thousand and sixteen. So, in fiscal nineteen, one sixteenth of one percent of the three-year average total taxable valuation of the district for tax year fourteen, tax year fifteen, and tax year sixteen is subtracted from the fiscal eighteen reimbursement amount, and so on. So, I did the calculation at the bottom, so.
Ironically equals five eighths of a mil, which is what they said was going to run out. So, somehow, that calculation equals out to five eighths of a mil, which is what we're told the runout would be.
Right.
So, this is the amount, you know, unless there's another change that comes to it, we're going to see that that amount's taken from our reimbursement amount per year, so two hundred and thirteen thousand, and this is how, you know, it's looking for us. So, this is significant. You know, back in fiscal eighteen, we had two point five million, now in fiscal twenty, we're at two point one. A couple of years, we're looking at one point nine, one point seven, one point five, so it's going down, it's going down fast. Page thirty-five has everything rolled up to the forecast line. So, you know, again, reasonably estimating the first three, which is the homestead and the credits. Line four is the phase-out of TPP, and we're just taking that from the prior page that we had. And then when we total everything up, those are the figures that go into line one point zero five zero of the five-year forecast. Page thirty-six talks about line one point zero six zero, all the revenues. In the middle, talks about the different investments that the school district has, Red Tree colored in red, Star Ohio colored in blue, and then our Huntington Hybrid colored in green. The middle, I like that chart, it shows us the monthly average yield percentages from July of eighteen all the way to September of two thousand and nineteen. So, it gives us a good, you know, quick snapshot of just how the, the yield percentages have been either going up or going down. So, they were going up, and I think around February, March, April, they were at their highest, May, and then from there, starting to go down. The bottom of the page, that paragraph talks about our SF fourteen tuition. So, we have a consultant, Mr. O'Keefe, who works on that for the district. We can see the last sentence or two, in fiscal eighteen, we had thirteen students at an approximate reimbursement of sixteen thousand. At fiscal nineteen, we had nineteen students at an approximate reimbursement of seventeen thousand. These are students that are court-placed into our district, and we receive that reimbursement amount for those students. Since they're court-placed, you know, the court could easily pull them away from us too, so. I'm going to flip to the next page, page thirty-seven. At the top, we talk about tuition, the tuition program for the district. We can see fiscal sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenties projection. So, our kids, you know, went from seventy, sixty-five, eighty-six to a hundred and thirty, and now they're projected to be a hundred and ninety. And we can see the funds that, you know, correspond to that, over six hundred thousand that we're looking to collect.
Why is the tuition, I thought the tuition was like fifty-five hundred dollars, yet you have seven thousand for high school and, or is that what it was your past?
Seventeen, yes.
Yeah, in that, that year, that's what it was.
Oh, that's what it was, and then it was decreased. And look at how it changed with what we were able to get back. Yeah.
Started going up.
And we doubled.
You know that in two thousand and ten, eleven, we had a hundred and fifty, over a hundred and fifty tuition students, so that by two thousand and sixteen, it dropped to seventy.
Now, the math, you know, adds up to six hundred and sixty-six thousand, and I have that plugged in the forecast, but also, keep in mind, timing affects it. We have, you know, parents that pay, you know, since our school year ends, they pay early for the following school year, but we book it in that school year, so there's going to be a timing issue with the payments. We'll collect some from, you know, a year and, you know, book it in the next year, so there's a timing issue that goes into that. Line two for the forecast, actually, line one, I'll still stay on that. We're looking at the mid-six hundred thousands, and then, you know, fiscal twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, you know, we tiered that down just a little bit with the thought that the floor would be a hundred and thirty students, that we wouldn't get lower than that. So, that's the five hundred thousand, so, you know, we're thinking that that's the floor for tuition students. It's probably not, it's probably going to be higher, so we're going to have more revenue, but the thought for just estimating reasonably on the forecast is, the floor is a hundred and thirty for what it was in nineteen, you know, just kind of based off past figures and where we're at currently. We're thinking we're probably going to stick in the, you know, one nineties, it's probably safe, but again, just conservatively saying, okay, you know, a hundred and thirty's the absolute floor that we're thinking that's going to be. Line two is our SF tuition. Fiscal twenty has two hundred and fifty thousand estimated in for the court-place students that we have. I tiered that down to a hundred thousand from fiscal twenty through, excuse me, fiscal twenty-one through twenty-four. But again, the thought of that decrease from fiscal twenty, where it's estimated to be two hundred and fifty thousand, to fiscal twenty-one at a hundred thousand, is it's easy to, you know, pull those court-place students out, you know, that are with maybe grandma or grandpa, that's how it works. Interest on investments, we're looking at three hundred thousand, that's line four for this fiscal year. It's tiered down, again, that's going to be affected by the yield percentages that are going to be out there, as well as our cash balance. So, if we're deficit spending, the cash that we have available to invest is going to decrease, so that's why we have that. All those numbers roll up to the bottom, our total number, which goes to the five-year forecast. Again, that's line one point zero six zero. Can we go to page thirty-eight? This is all the financing sources, line two point zero six zero of the forecast. The largest is number one, which is our refund, a rebate from Bureau of Workers Compensation. And again, that total goes to the five-year forecast.
You have twenty fifty and twenty-one is twenty-five. Right?
Where are you at?
Surplus, am I, did I fall behind? I'm on thirty-eight, the first line, BWC surplus.
Yep.
Actuals are thirty-two, forty-three, and then your estimate is fifty, and then it drops to twenty-five. That's a pretty...
Yes, yes.
Big drop.
Yep, so if we look at fiscal twenty-one to, excuse me, fiscal twenty for line number one, it's at fifty thousand, then it drops to twenty-five.
Right.
That's because if we look at the second to last paragraph, fiscal year twenty, we'll see an increase in Bureau of Workers Compensation surplus refund rebate as the Bureau of Workers Compensation Board approved for the fifth time since two thousand and thirteen to return at least one billion to employers following strong investment returns, following, following injury claims and other operational efficiencies. So, we're estimating that that, you know, is going to be significant that we receive that.
Yeah, it'll be a significant drop because of the changes to the...
Yes.
Federal Reserve rate.
We know that, that's already been voted, that two thousand and twenty number, that's already been determined, that, that, that number's coming back, there's no guarantee that work, that the next...
Right, there's no guarantee it'll stay up that high.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Right, investments could be lower, expenses could be higher. Okay, just, I'm trying to understand a little there, thanks.
Page thirty-nine starts our expenses. So, we went through revenues, now we're going to expenses. Now, we're looking at Personnel Services, line three point zero one zero. This page has a lot of good information, it's the same as it was for May, where both collective bargaining agreements are both expire in fiscal twenty. Chat and Chase. This, excuse me, page forty has the object codes. Everything for expenses is recorded via an object code, so for Personnel Services, it's the one hundred object code, and there's a lot of different one hundred options that we can have to book different expenses as they come. But a lot of that, you'll see kind of duplicate, you know, names for the same, like jury duty for one twenty-seven, jury duty for one fifty-seven. That's because they're classified as certified and non-certified. Page forty-one has the estimate for fiscal twenty for certified salaries. And if we look at an example, number thirty, certified salaries for the high school orchestra, there's a decrease from fiscal nineteen to fiscal twenty, that's because we have David Michaels, the new teacher.
Retired, but was Mrs. Pittman before, so was a new teacher, just didn't make as much money as the teacher that left, so.
Everything totals to the bottom, that's going to go to the next couple of pages that we look at. Again, keep in mind, timing on these salaries too. Salary contracts start in August, so not quite seven one to six-thirty the fiscal year, so we have to keep that in mind too on timing. Page forty-two has the non-certified salaries. I grouped Chase employees together in the first half of the page. We go to page forty-three, we see a comparison between fiscal nineteen and fiscal twenty, the amount difference and the percentage difference. You see the grand total at the bottom there as well. And page forty-four is going to have everything estimated into the forecast figures. So, fiscal nineteen actual... So fiscal nineteen actual, and then fiscal twenty through twenty-four estimates. We look at salaries, object one-eleven, the very first row that we have. In the brackets for fiscal twenty, we have base and step, that's because certified, received, and fiscal twenty are base and step. And then going forward, fiscal twenty-one through twenty-four has only the step, and that step's estimated to be about a four percent increase per year. Negotiations are gonna be left up to the board and administration and the unions, and then we'll input those numbers into the forecast as they go. It's the same for salaries for one forty-one, which is non-certified, the base and step, and then the step, which is approximately about a one percent increase. The grand total has everything rolled up, and those figures go to line three point zero one zero of the five-year forecast. On page forty-five, if we look at the highlighted text for both certified and classified, Chat and Chase, estimated salaries, and I'll read the first one, for fiscal years twenty-one through twenty-four, only accounts for step increases and educational incentives as those carry over from the existing negotiated contract. If there is no new contract, negotiations between Chat and the Kaga Department of Education won't determine any future rate increase or other increases to be forecasted. Page forty-six, we're starting the next line of the five-year forecast, which is retirement and insurance, line three point zero two zero. I like the bottom part of this chart and the middle. The middle, I've included rates as a comparison from two thousand and seventeen, and the rate year starts for health insurance, two thousand, excuse me, October. So, yeah, the different time period again, so a lot of different time periods. But we can see where it was in seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, the enrollment as of six-one nineteen, and the percentage increases all the way to the right. And then below, I included the rate increases for medical, drug, dental, and vision for the past five years. So two thousand and nineteen, eighteen, seventeen, sixteen, and fifteen. And we can see it's been as high as, you know, twenty-two percent for drug and twelve percent for medical. Medical's the highest cost, followed by drug, then dental, then vision. How the rate increases work, there's a consultant that works with suburban health, consultant's name is Glenn Zanna. Glenn recommends, based off a lot of factors, what the rate increase should be. And then the member school districts take that advice, and they either accept and vote for that increase or vote for a different increase that they think is reasonable. This year, the member school districts for two thousand and nineteen follow the recommendation of the consultant for the increase that we see below. There were two no-vote districts, and every other district in the consortium voted yes. The no votes were Garfield Heights and, I believe, it was North Ralton. Forty-seven has all the object codes, these are two hundreds. Page forty-eight has a comparison between years. I just wanna highlight the middle, medical, drug, dental, and vision, two forty object code. We see a percentage difference of eight percent. But if we look back at, you know, page forty-six, we're looking at like a four percent increase. Why is that a little bit higher? Well, keep in mind, this doesn't start till October first, and the first couple of months of the year, we're at two thousand and eighteen's rates. So it's adjusting for that little bit of a time difference with a little conservative estimate in there, which was a little higher. If we go to page forty-nine, I just wanna highlight the middle, lines two forty and two fifty object codes on page forty-nine. In the brackets, twelve percent is the increase year to year. And the thought is, leave a ten percent for the premium increase and a two percent on top of that for any employees going from single to family, 'cause that would also increase the cost, or new people coming to the district to be added on. That's conservative, that adds the conservative nature of the forecast. Is it gonna be twelve percent as an increase for all those years? Hopefully not, but we have it conservatively built in, just in case it comes close to that. And looking from the past history, it's reasonable to look at it that way, I think. Continuing on, and again, that number at the bottom rolls up to that line of the forecast on page forty-nine. Fifty's the conclusion, fifty-one starts purchase services. These are four hundred object codes that we have, this is line three point zero three zero, the five-year forecast. If we flip to page fifty-two, the greatest cost that we have in purchase services is the agreement that the district is in with the ESC of Northeast Ohio. It's a service agreement, and we have the approximate thirty positions that we have. We have the day's work, total salary, any reimbursements that the district receives, and then the total, and total summed up at the bottom. One point one million. And if we look at the paragraph at the top, last sentence, this expense is booked, and instruction services, object four-eleven, which is lines forty-six, forty-seven, and forty-eight. And a little bit above that, I think the third to last sentence, the ESC applies a two point five percent, at this point, salary increase. So the forecast is, you know, forecasting for a two point five percent increase from the ESC for this. This was approved at, you know, a recent board meeting, a couple of board meetings ago. Then we start all of the object codes that we have. There's a lot of detail in these for what we see. You know, we go off the logic of needs and wants, and, you know, we put some padding in some of these numbers for repairs and maintenance. Others, we have, you know, amounts that are set that, you know, again, the requisition process that we have, you know, goes to the different workflows, and, you know, then it gets approved and goes from there. If we flip to page fifty-four, lines forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight are the ESC instructional costs that we were just looking at. And we can see in the brackets, fiscal twenty-one through twenty-four, a two point five percent increase that's built in. We go to page fifty-five. We can see our legal costs, sixty-six. Sixty-seven has the architect fees, just, you know, forecasting if GPD is gonna be the consultant, the architect for the district renovation projects that we're looking at, you know, we have a cost built in. Our U.S. News and World Report license, line seventy-two, our board docs, line seventy-five. If we go to page fifty-six, it's, you know, at the very top, we have our carpet cleaning, seventy-six, garbage removal, seventy-seven. We have all of our repair and maintenance accounts in here. Line eighty-three was a bus garage repair of the diesel tank. We have that actual for fiscal nineteen. We don't have it forecasted because, you know, that was a one-time account code. The account exists in our system, so if we have to use it again, we will. But in those cases, I lump everything into, you know, certain line items, and maybe we reallocate some to create new accounts. I'm very big on creating new accounts and showing where the money's going. Flip to page fifty-seven, we have more repair and maintenance. You know, one eighteen is a good example, so the elementary school, you know, you start with twenty thousand, but then you take for, you know, certain projects that come up. So that's why we see twenty thousand for twenty-one through twenty-four. Fifty-eight, we keep going. We look at line one forty-four, that's our pest control for the district, that's very important. You know, we have bolo sticks, one forty-eight, if, you know, necessary, we have it in the forecast. If not, you know, it's built in. We go to page fifty-nine, this is gonna be the travel for the district. We go to page sixty. We have our utilities at the bottom, our electric, one ninety, that's flatline, twenty-one through twenty-four, a hundred and eighty-five thousand. We just recently approved that reduced contract with Ohio Schools Council. NG, I believe, was the vendor. The rate's a significant decrease, so I wanna see how that works out with our usage and the rate, but I'm thinking it's gonna be lower than a hundred and eighty-five thousand that we have in it for electric. But at the same time, where we see savings and maybe one line item, another line item goes up. One ninety-one, District Water and Sewer, has increased. And Tom, do you wanna talk about why that increase happened for Water and Sewer?
Because the sewer district now charges, beginning this year, they're charged on your surface area water runoff. And we are, as a school district, are not exempt from those costs, although we, because we teach, about water runoff and water retention in our curriculum, we get a reduced rate on that. But nobody in the county is exempt from that, so. It took them about two years to calculate those numbers out, they let us know it's coming in, this is the first year it's been implemented, so it's not going away.
Page sixty-one, you know, towards the bottom of that page, we have our tuition to outplace students, as well as our foundation settlement deductions. Page sixty-two has everything rolled up into the grand total, and that grand total line goes to the five-year forecast. So line three point zero three zero for purchase service. There is a, you know, increase from what our actual was to what the estimate is for twenty. But again, you know, some of those accounts are padded for repairs and maintenance. Some have, you know, amounts that are set in that, you know, the district has the requisition process, that everything's analyzed when it goes through. So, you know, there's a control there to manage the costs, and, you know, it's something everybody's mindful of. Page sixty-three starts supplies and materials, five hundred object code for what we have. And again, the same, you know, thinking, everything's broken out, we can see supplies for the elementary school. That's gone up because we've had more kids in elementary school. Middle school, high school on page sixty-five. Page sixty-six, office supplies. Five fourteen is health and hygiene. Five sixteen starts our software costs at the bottom of page sixty-six. They're all on page sixty-seven. Textbooks at the bottom of page sixty-eight. We go to page sixty-nine, we can see an increase on line one thirty-one. So those are elementary school reading textbooks that we purchased, twenty-six thousand. If we go to the middle for middle school, we look at line one thirty-five, middle school social studies textbooks, thirty-seven thousand. So that's why we see a big increase from your buying textbooks. We go to page seventy, these are supplemental textbooks. And again, these are all in the long sheets that are provided to the board, too, every month, what we see. The five-seventies, those are, you know, repair supply accounts that we have. Those are padded budgets for, you know, blanket purchase orders. Again, one eighty-one is for the snowmelt and rock salt, and I'm really hoping we're not gonna have a bad winter this year, so we're not gonna have to expend the five thousand that's there. We do have one, we might have to pull from another account to give more to that one. Behind that, we have, you know, a lot of blankets that our maintenance department's gonna use for lighting supplies, which is one ninety-one. Paint, one ninety-four, ceiling tiles, one ninety-six. You know, for the five-eighties at the bottom, those are for the repair of the motor vehicles that we have for the district, so the repair of our buses, vans, as well as fuel, which is line two oh two, diesel fuel that we purchased. Seventy-three has everything rolled up, and those figures roll into the five-year forecast, line three point zero four zero, supplies and materials. There's not too much more to the forecast. Seventy-four has capital outlay. Seventy-five has the equipment that we're purchasing. Seventy-six, the equipment. And seventy-seven, the equipment. Everything, again, is rolled up into the grand total, which goes on to line three point zero five zero of the five-year forecast. In the bottom, the explanation, you know, we're keeping a flatline at a hundred and fifty thousand in the forecast for the years going forward. The district's capital improvement plan, which is in process, will provide a more accurate direction on future spending. GPD Group has been hired as the architect engineering firm to assist with the capital improvement plan. So they're the ones that are assessing the district, we saw the five reports, they're coming with a cost basis. We know that that cost is gonna greatly exceed what we can pay from the general fund for those repairs and renovations that we have. So, you know, another fund may have to pay for those that we have going forward. Seventy-eight starts other objects. Those are the object codes. The largest one is gonna be line eleven, which is county auditor treasure fees. Those are automatics, and when we receive our property taxes, the county takes a certain portion as their cut. The other line is gonna be our audit cost, which is number nine. So, you know, there may be efficiencies that we can work with our auditors to reduce the cost in that line, too, we're hoping. Page eighty has everything rolled up in the grand total. That goes into line four point three on our five-year forecast. Only two more pages, page eighty-one. These would, this would be our transfers out for fiscal twenty. We can see that we have three figures in that column, two hundred and fifty thousand, which is the district completely paying off the HB two sixty-four debt, and its debt payments, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty. Also, we have our transfers to the athletic fund. Line five and line six would be food service. Those funds run deficits, the general fund gives money to those funds to bring them up to be a positive. The last, and everything is rolled up into the total, which goes to the five-year forecast, that is line five point zero one zero. And then the last page of the five-year forecast, page eighty-two, is encumbrances. Fiscal nineteen, we had seventy-nine thousand. This is when we close out all the open purchase orders, so we don't have a high balance going to the next year. We have a hundred thousand, but the hope is to get a lot lower than that going forward. And that's on line eight point zero one zero of the five-year forecast. Any questions? Again, this is a living document, you know, we use this as a tool here for the district administration. It's gonna be updated in May, and then November going forward. So it's always gonna be updated, it's always gonna be changed, it'll be adjusted.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lucio. Next up is presentation, OSBA meeting schedule.
There's really nothing to present on that, that's just, that's for your information, I hand it out for people that sign up for. Certainly, as we've discussed, that's just a guide, so you know where another board member might be, whether or not you wanna... Certainly can double up on some of those, there's no restriction on that, but I just kinda pass that out for, just for general information. I would say, you wanna make sure that you, I know Matt's giving you the booklet. He's also, you also have your ID badge, make sure that you have that with you when you go down. And I know that I gave you the, your ticket for the Alliance Luncheon. I didn't realize Mrs. Riley had also run off tickets to give you for the Alliance Luncheon, and I have a backup ticket for the Alliance Luncheon, so.
Oh, good.
We've got three copies of the tickets, so if anybody goes, doesn't make it to the Alliance Luncheon, something went drastically bad. But, so that's on there as well. Jason just told me on the way out today that they're, they're gonna move location where we're gonna have dinner. As they said after talking to the legal counsel, that we need to have it onsite, just to make sure everything falls in the line of that. So he's gonna, he's gonna let me know tomorrow, probably at the, right at the convention center, there's, at the hotel attached to it, has a restaurant. So that's probably what we're...
That was Monday night, right?
Yes.
Go ahead. Yeah, just wanna add, since we're going down to OSBA Capital Conference, we emailed our legal counsel for a public meeting notice, 'cause we're gonna talk capital improvements. If everybody's comfortable, we'll set it for the dinner that we're having with GPD. So that dinner is at eight PM, it was at Gordon's, but now it's gonna be changed. So once we get the location from GPD, we'll put that out as a special meeting notice. And it's conducted as a special meeting, so we, you know, have our, you know, roll call, we start the meeting, we go through, we take minutes, and then we'll have our adjournment. So does that work for everybody to have exclusively just for the dinner that we have?
Just, if you get the, and I'll email this, too, if you get the opportunity, I talked to the board previously about some professional development, Bob Summers, he's with Educational Solutions. So I'll email you his, the booth that he, that they'll be at, if you could stop by and talk to Bob and ask him about the discussion we had about some PD for the board itself. So, that he came up and presented to me. So a lot going on at the OSBA. I'll be going on Sunday after the National Honor Society induction here, Sunday, so I'll be done Sunday evening. And if anybody's bored on Sunday night, Ohio State, Russell, Stanford, if you want tickets, call me out. I'll make arrangements for tickets over at the, the new Cavelli Center, the brand new, their first match in the Cavelli Center, so. That's seven o'clock on Sunday night, so.
I'd take you up on that.
Yeah.
There's an offer.
And that's, that's pretty much it for the OSBA stuff. I wanna jump to the, the board meeting calendar, and that's this, the sheet that you had here, and the dates... that I'm, we're most interested in are the, the red dates, the, the agenda review dates we can talk about later, but those are basically looking at the calendar, and where, if we follow the same schedule that we followed in previous years, where the meeting dates would fall for this coming year. And I would ask you to, and I know that not everybody has their calendars with them right now, but to, to take a look at that, I think the one I gave you does not have the, a January meeting date on it, does it, am I correct, because mine is different than yours?
Does January eighth and January twenty-second?
I'm, I'm sorry, July.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Yeah, I noticed that.
I was going to ask you about that.
July, I.
Are you going to do that?
I, I have penciled in on mine the July fifteenth meeting date, which, again, that's purely up to the board, I would, it just seems to be in need with the possibility that, that people could, we could get retirements as late as July tenth. And then it gets to be kind of a dog-eat-dog market for, for hiring new employees, and we certainly would want to, if we find a good candidate, want to be able to tell them that, that we can get, have them approved, not have to wait to August for board approval, because if you're a young teacher coming out of college, and somebody tells you, I can approve you on July fifteenth, or I can, the other guy tells you August second, sometimes those people don't want to wait, they fear of not having a job, and so it just gives us a little bit of leverage there. So we can schedule that date, and then if we decide later in the year we don't want it, we can, we can absolutely, absolutely take the date away, but I, I just think, we always seem to be so backed up in that first meeting of August with so much work, because we, we've gone that whole month of July.
Right.
Believe me, I would like the month of July off as much as anybody would, but I, it would also be nice to get a chunk of work done in July, and to know that when we hit the ground running in August with everybody in place that we need to have in place, and mostly for personnel reasons, so. That's for, again, please take a look at those scheduled dates, if, if you know that there's going to be some conflicts, shoot me an email, because if, if I have two board members that have a conflict on the same date, we'll look to change it, if it's one board member, we can kind of go on, and we'll proceed as we have, if we know that there's going to be important business, we certainly won't do it while a board member's on vacation, we'll, we'll hold that business to, to one day back, so I, I don't want any, I don't want you guys looking at vacation schedules and saying I'm going to alter a vacation schedule based on a board meeting dates, that's not the intent of this, this is the, just to kind of give a heads up, and, and then also, then you can let me know some availability, so.
Can I ask you on that, is there, like, the July fifteenth, would it be too big of a pain to bump that back one more week?
Not at all, but I just arbitrarily picked that date.
Just thinking, like, being a school personnel, and trying to fit in a vacation with the kids having sports starting August first, like, I don't know, that gives you like a, like a two-week window to schedule.
Twenty-second is?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we could push that back even just a little bit more.
That's, that's fine, that's why, that's why I gave you the handout for, for some discussion here, if anybody just taking a peek at it, if anything's really jumping to mind.
A wider gap in possibilities of R and R, you know?
Anything else on that?
Nope.
All right, Mr. Muccio, any? Did I skip something?
Oh, sorry, here's discussions, I apologize.
Oh, I wasn't going to skip you.
You're on.
Mr. Muccio, do you have anything left to say?
Oh, discussion comments. The only comment I had was, yeah, everybody has their Alliance ticket, so I'll have this with me, so if anybody doesn't have their Alliance ticket for the luncheon, I have a copy.
You mean, the one that's right here?
Yeah. That's the one Sandy made.
Could be scalping on the street.
We have a lot.
You got a double book to see.
Everybody, like Tom said, everybody, you have your ticket to get into the conference, so that's good. Everybody has the email from the hotel confirmation, that's going to.
Can I ask, because I didn't read it?
Okay.
Do we pay, and then we'll be reimbursed, or is this paid for?
No, I'm going to make sure it's on the district credit card.
Okay.
You don't have to worry about a thing.
Thank you.
And aside from putting out the public notice, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Evans?
The only comment I have is, we're moving forward, in November, we'll have a proclamation for the board to dedicate the gym in Flip Saunders' name. We had a great meeting with several members of the alumni association. Flip's wife Debbie has told me that she will be in town. Ryan, Flip's son, will be here that January fourth as well, because the Timberwolves, he's the head coach of the Timberwolves, they played the Cavs the next day. Unfortunately, the Cavs play on the fourth, so we lost our MC, Tim Alcorn, the new radio announcer, was going to come and MC for us, but he can't, but I thought, I think we picked up a good replacement. Marissa Conapelli, one of our alums, who is currently the sideline reporter for the Cincinnati Bengals, and who did a, a kind of an exposé on Flip's life that never got aired, is going to come up from Cincinnati and MC the, the event for us, so. That's going to, it's going to be free admission, we play Trinity that night, it's going to be between the JV and the varsity game. We're going to, we're going to order a nice, the, the pad in the front of the gym is going to, we ordered a new pad that's going to say Flip Saunders Gymnasium, and then we're going to have a plaque on the outside wall as you enter the gym, so. The alumni room will be open, we're going to get out on Redskins Lodge, we're hopefully get a nice crowd that night, so.
January fourth?
Fourth, January fourth. The only difficult part about that is that we're not back in session yet, because we'll become, just be coming off, so I'll, I'll do an all-call that week to, to all students and say, hey, it's free admission on, on Saturday night if you come to the basketball game, and also to the, any, any alumni, we'll have the archive room open, and they were working on cleaning the archive room up this week, so, see if we can, can't bring a, a nice crowd in for that event, so. And we worked it around, the Timberwolves are only here once, so it just happened to work out that we had a game that day, and so we could, we certainly wanted Ryan here, and I think, last time Debbie talked to me, she, the girls wanted to come, I, all three daughters are now married, the last one got married this summer, so whether they can make it or not, I'm not sure, but. And Mark Turmey, Flip's agent, actually, is from Independence, so I'll invite Mark, and I'm going to get ahold of Greg, his, Flip's brother, is the only Saunders man, a family member left, is in Chicago, so I'll get ahold of Greg, and I, I think Greg will come in as well. Very good.
Cool. Okay, moving on to the policy and bylaws review.
I'm just going to go through one, because essentially all five of them are the same, but they fall in different sections of the, of the, of the policy manual, and this is the use of tobacco on the school premises, and I'll, I'll use this one as kind of the sample, and, and the other four are actually modeled off of this, they're just applied to those different categories. But if you take a look at, this, this models what we have currently in our, in our policy, and, and what we've got checked off there, the term tobacco includes any product, some of the changes that were made in there include electronic smoking devices, those were, that was updates to that jewel, not, not limited to jewels, but includes any cessation product approved by the United States Food and Drug for Medical Treatment, Reduce, Eliminate Nigotine, Tobacco Dependence. We did not check twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, because we hadn't had that before, and essentially, I don't want to check off a box that we, is unenforceable. You know, it's, it's nice to say that, but if we don't have the ability to enforce that, it's, it makes it much more, much more difficult to do.
Somewhat redundant, since, since the previous three words are at all times.
Yeah. And then on the second page, school grounds, athletic facilities, and any school-related activity, we don't, we don't move off of the, off, off-board premises, we don't list exceptions in our time-wise, and we don't put designated area in statute either, so as far as the advertising and promotion in accordance with policy, ninety-seven oh 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 one, tobacco is prohibited on school grounds, and all school-sponsored publications, and all school-sponsored events, and we leave it at that, because that's what our, that mimics our signage that we have up, and, and we'll update our signage on that as well. And, and that's essentially the same on all, all five policies that, that verbiage, so take a look at that, that's first reading, if you've got any comments, whatever, shoot me an email, and that'll be on for approval at the next board meeting.
Thank you. On board discussions, we have, give me a second, the six thousand finances, who wants to talk about that purchases?
Yep. I want to pass out to everyone here our existing policy, and this is actually the perfect time with GPD's presentation earlier, and how they were talking about the cost for the repair. So everybody has a copy of our purchases policy, and the first paragraph touches base on three price quotes are to be provided to the treasurer on purchases over three thousand. Then we jump into the second paragraph that we have here, and that's really what we're going to talk about. When the purchase of and contract for single items of supplies, materials, or equipment, and when the board determines to build, repair, we're looking at a repair, enlarge, improve, or demolish a school building, the cost of which will exceed twenty-five thousand, the treasurer shall obtain competitive bids. So, you know, the first paragraph talks on that we get three price quotations for anything over three thousand, so we automatically do that for, you know, the potential repair project that we have. According to our policy, if the cost exceeds twenty-five thousand, we have to go the competitive bid way. And I have a little flow chart here, that I'm going to pass out to everybody, and this is a report I did for a previous school, but this follows suit to all school districts out there. What this flow chart talks about is our policy, essentially, so if we go down a couple sentences, see where it says bids shall be sealed? So one factor of competitive bidding with the twenty-five thousand dollar threshold is that now we have to have sealed bids, and all that means is, if we have three companies bidding on the specs, specifications of a project, they have to seal the bids and provide them to us, and then we have to have an open meeting in which we open those bids, and we have to announce it. And this flow chart talks about what the process is for competitive bidding, and the threshold that we have is twenty-five thousand. So number one, we talk about the orange, hold an admin meeting to determine the project necessity, and if the project must be bid, then we get down, that's the threshold of twenty-five thousand. Then determine if a cooperative purchasing program can be utilized, all that means is we're, you know, we're with Ohio Schools Council, they do all the competitive bidding for school districts, so they already handle, you know, a lot of that, so they can say, this is the competitive bidding vendor that's won the roofing agreement, so schools, you can go with tramco for this period of time. The next box talks about creating a detailed work scope by an architect or engineer, pass Board of Education resolution authorizing the district to advertise for bids, pick a date for a mandatory pre-bid meeting and public bid opening, advertise in the newspaper or online, general circulation, and on the school's website, the scope and mandatory pre-bid meeting date and time, and when the opening of the sealed bids will occur, because again, everything's going to be in a sealed format, that's used for fairness, so the other vendors can't see what the one vendor is bidding on the project, because they're all trying to be the lowest bidder essentially to win the work from the government entity. Then hold a mandatory pre-bid meeting, so only bidders that attend the meeting can bid. We had that with our RFP for GPD group, so if you, you know, think back to the RFP, we said that only vendors who come and walk the school district site can actually, you know, we're going to take applications for, and the three of them that did, we did take the applications, and they came and they presented to the board. Walk the project site, the next one is issue any addendums or clarifications via email to the pre-bid meeting. Then in the gray talks about how the pre-bid meeting would be handled, you know, back to the orange, public bid opening, so maybe two weeks after the pre-bid meeting during a public meeting of those sealed bids, and then it's choosing the lowest responsible bidder during a Board of Education meeting. So this is the competitive bidding process that we also have in our policy here, talking about bids shall be sealed and shall be opened by the treasurer in the presence of at least one witness. We talk about by board resolution, how we go about that for the solicitation of bids, the awarding of bids on the next page. Why is it that we're looking to potentially change the threshold? So I have another handout, and we have one more after this, so. But this really gets to the whole purpose of what we're looking at. So this, again, is part of that report I created for a different school district, but I'm going to compile one for our school district. If you look at the middle, it talks about which purchases must be bid, and it talks about the three situations that require Boards of Education to competitively bid. So the first is Boards of Education must solicit bids to build, repair, enlarge, improve, demolish any school building if the cost of the work is over twenty-five thousand. Two and three, two talks about school buses, and the third is for food and supplies. But below, Senate Bill Three revises the twenty-five thousand threshold for such situations associated with building, repairing, enlarging, improving, and demolishing any school building, and as a result, beginning in March of two thousand seventeen, this threshold will increase to fifty thousand. So that's law, law changed it in Senate Bill Three from twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand, that's allowable. And this is the actual printout of that law that we have here with the fifty thousand within the first paragraph, just so everybody has a copy of it. And on the back page, we can see the Senate Bill Three that went into effect March sixteenth of two thousand seventeen. So for this discussion here, it would be taking our policy, which has twenty-five thousand as our threshold for competitive bidding, and upping that to what Senate Bill Three is at, at fifty thousand. We're still gathering three quotes, but we don't have to follow the workflow process of having sealed bids and opening that in public if we, you know, do it for a project that's twenty, you know, right now we're twenty-five thousand and under. Fifty thousand and under gives us some leeway to do projects such as the one we have here, you know, that's kind of at that line of twenty-five thousand. So it's just really opening up more leeway for the school district, which we're just moving our policy to be in line with what the state had recently passed, so it's a relaxation, maybe a stringent process up from twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand. But again, we're still, you know, doing our due diligence of that, but, you know, looking at it, the state, you know, had their logic for moving it from twenty-five to fifty thousand.
And that's exactly what the logic was, it was because of building projects, and it created too cumbersome of a process because of the, the number of projects that would fall in that range, that they, they bumped the rationale of take it to fifty thousand is that a greater number of projects, it just made it a little bit less cumbersome for those projects, fifty thousand and under, and they certainly wanted the process followed fifty thousand and above, because, because of the scope of those projects, but the, with the cost of repairs, the building right now, that, that it was kind of restrictive for, for school districts, and it really slowed the process down.
So Mr. Muccio, you and I talked a little bit about this yesterday, I had some questions about this, and, and just to kind of circle back and underscore, my understanding is that whatever we currently do for items that would cost more than three thousand dollars getting three quotes, and essentially doing, or imposing whatever additional pre-contract provisions on the vendor or vendors that we want, we can do without having to go through the formal bid process, up, if we were to approve this, up to fifty thousand, whereas currently, it would be up to twenty-five thousand, is that kind of a fair statement? Okay. I appreciate your time yesterday, and your, your having been down this road before helps me, and I think helps the district as well to move forward.
Yeah, I think so, too. And while we're at it, is the three thousand and ORC issue?
Uh, no.
No, that's, that's something we decide on our own.
Yes.
What is typical for schools?
I think that's reasonable.
That's reasonable, okay. Wendy's smiling at me, and I don't lie.
Well, we have a good process, too, because if we look at, you know, where is it, if we look at the second page, you know, with limitations, all purchases that are within the amount contained in the appropriation and were originally contemplated in the budgeting process may be made upon authorization of the treasurer unless the contemplated purchase is for more than five thousand, in which case prior approval is required from the Board of Education. So we have, everything over five thousand goes to the Board of Education for approval, that's a good process that we have in place, we do that obviously. Anything that's over three thousand, there are some, you know, for, you know, cases of emergency or such a nature that price negotiations would not result in the savings, you know, anything over three thousand by policy that we have here, you know, price quotations have to be provided to the treasurer for going forward. That's a good threshold, some schools go lower, some schools go, you know, past school was, you know, one to five hundred dollars, one quote, five hundred, two, three thousand, two quotes, anything over three thousand, three quotes, so we're in line with other school districts.
We let you know when we run into issues sometimes, especially on that, in that price range, different vendors, after, if they've quoted three or four times for you and haven't gotten a job, they're not going to quote for you.
Because it's not, not big enough.
Because they, you know, they're, they're honest, you know, I've, I've made that phone call numerous occasions, said, well, I quoted the last five years, and I didn't get the work, I'm not going to waste my time and do a quote for you. So sometimes it's a little bit extra work on that. Certainly, OSC helps us, because they, they really are always constantly working to try to keep a expanded vendors list, and, and those, those are pre-quote prices, in other words, they, they do. And those are pre-quote prices, in other words, they do pre-bid stuff, and that, that helps us a great deal to be a member of OSC on some of those things. And some, also, in our, in our situation, we ran into some sole-source vendors too, which streamlines the process a little bit. For instance, we, if we know that we need, also, the example I use is scoreboards. If we're going to use Daktronic scoreboards, Daktronic sets their prices on scoreboards. So, I can go to however many vendors I want. The price of a Daktronic scoreboard is going to be the same no matter who I go to because they nationally set the price on that, so there aren't any reductions on that. If it, if I'm looking for a different scoreboard now, the price might be different. But Daktronic says, and I, I used to run into this when I had shop equipment, a saw stop. I remember crap, when I was looking for a saw, I called all the way out to Utah, and the guy phoned me and said, "Do you understand it?" The company sets the price, and I said, "No, I don't." He goes, "Well, this is, the company tells us that we can't reduce the price. We can't sell this on sale, or they won't allow us to be a vendor for this." So, the price of $4,000 is the price that they set the saw at, and nobody can sell to you for less than that. So, and I had called, my superintendent that I was working with at the time, I probably had called 25 places to try and get quotes, and it was, you know, there wasn't anything. I think he was messing with me. I think he wanted to see how many places I called before I come back to him, but I was.
So, kind of circling back to the renovations, because this is kind of in contemplation of a renovation project. Is it customary or expected that, say, an architect or a construction manager would have a list of OSC-approved contractors or vendors for a particular building improvement project? Like you cited or referenced Tremco before, you know, which is kind of a standard building need, maintenance need or renovation need. And I'm just curious to know whether they have kind of a long list of contractors which streamlines the process for them and for us ultimately, and I don't know if I'm connecting the dots properly.
I, I think, I think that is the case. And I think if, if we go back to our selection of GPD as our, as our architect of this, one of the, one of the reasons that the board determines is because GPD had everything in-house, and they, and they weren't having, they didn't have to farm different things out to different, to different people to solicit those quotes. So, they, because of the size of their company, they handle A to Z. Whereas, we know that a couple of other architects that had, had been with us did only handle like A to, some, some farmed everything out, and in the middle, one farmed maybe half of the stuff out. So, one of, one of, part of the rationale that the board used, and I told all three of them this, was that because GPD was a sole source and had the contacts to, that they could do everything under one roof for us. And that was kind of what we were looking for at the time, one of the criteria that we had kind of set up, so.
Yeah, so I guess what I'm kind of trying to envision is moving down this path, is, is it, is it likely that we would see less competitive bid processing here within our district if, if it's already undertaken by the construction manager or architect or whoever kind of runs the day-to-day construction business or work for us?
It is possible if a cooperative program can show validly that, you know, a vendor was competitively bid, and we have that support that provides at the auditors. So, they can say that, you know, GPD may have a list of Tremcos and other vendors that have gone through cooperative purchasing programs that have already been, you know, competitively bid for projects. They may have that, which streamlines the process. They may not, and we have to go through kind of our internal process of three quotes. And, you know, they would bring back three vendors essentially that could work on the project and say, "Here, Board of Education and Administration, for the, you know, wall project that you're looking to do, here are at least three vendors for this because the cost is, you know, greater than $3,000 but smaller than $25,000." And then we would, you know, pick and choose, you know, with GPD's guidance, you know, the most qualified to work on the project. It is possible that they could streamline it.
And the beauty of GPD is because they have so many products going on. And I'll just use carpeting as an example. I, I can guarantee you that GPD probably uses anywhere between six and 10 different vendors for carpeting in schools. So, part of, part of where they would steal us would be based on size and what we're looking for. But they have that now, so it isn't one vendor. You know, they have so many different products in so many different places. I think you'll, you'll see very few instances where they're, they're going to say, "Well, we, we need to wait for vendor A to get done over at XYZ High School before you can come over here because that's, that's the vendor we use for that type of project." They have multiple, they have multiple construction people that they use. And again, a part of the rationale for going with a group of their size because they had that, they had that breadth and that scope.
Okay, thanks.
So, this time, do you want us to think about it further? If we have questions, talk to you individually, and we'll see where it goes.
I'll take a look at some other people that have, that use Neola as well, and I'll try and pull their policies and forward them to you so you can take a look at as a comparison. And I'm just saying that because I haven't, I haven't looked at anybody else's prior to this. But I'll pull, like, the school down the road and a couple of people near to us and send those out to you.
Anything else in it? It should be noted, what?
I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm muttering to myself. This 3314 was passed in March, and ours was in May. It was two months after the up to 50.
Okay. It should be noted that Board of Education members received their agendas several days prior to the actual meeting. Thus, they have had considerable opportunity to study it, ask questions, et cetera. Future agenda items. I know we said something, Gary. What did we say?
We both have one.
I can't think right now.
Okay, that's all, yeah, it's getting late. It's a long meeting. We need to, I had asked that we hold off on the nomination for, or the selection of a representative for the Career Center Board so that all of us would have the opportunity to attend the all-boards dinner and walk around the building again and get a little better feel for, for what the Career Center is about before we made that vote. So, let's put that on the next agenda because that dinner is over.
Anything else for future agenda items? Probably add some sharing of what OSBA maybe usually would do something like that, or if it just happened in our roundabout after.
Excellent, yeah. I just took a glance at it, but there seems, there's a, again, you got to kind of cut through it sometimes. Sometimes there, it's a 45-minute commercial for a company, but it looks like there's some. And I will tell you that if you're planning on going to the funding meeting, the Cup Patterson meeting, that you want, you're going to want to get there early because that, I'm 100% certain they're going to close that one out. And I see they've only allocated two rooms for it, so I have to believe that that'll be a packed house in there.
We're not going to executive session. So, upcoming regular board meetings, they're all here in the Bonner Ray Media Center on Wednesdays at 7:00 PM. Only two more this calendar year, November 20th, 2019, and December 11th, 2019. Oh, gosh, you did put the new ones for 2020. That's so weird to say that. Organizational meeting and first regular meeting for 2020 will be January 8th at 7:00 PM. At this point, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Would someone like to second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Dobbins. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5 to 0. It is 9:35, and we are adjourned.